Welcome everyone to the October, excuse me, September Board of Education Meeting. We're gonna start with the invocation by Ms. Davis and then we'll have the pledge by Mr. Miller, he's gonna lead us in the pledge, so would everybody please stand?
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this day that you have given us for its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes. Please help all of our leaders make the best decisions possible for Brunswick County schools. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we forever be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Next item is the presentations. Ms. Russell Rutledge?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. I've got folks with me that are here today from South Brunswick High School. They have been needing a hitting facility for their baseball team for a couple of years now. We've gone back and forth a little bit about where to put it, what it should look like. We had set aside $15,000 in this year's capital outlay budget to begin a design of the facility. And the folks at South Brunswick have, this is great, but they've gotten ahead of me. They have a design for the building and they have a plan where they'd like to put it and help raise funds for it. So, I'd like to introduce these gentlemen. Come on up, guys, whoever's gonna speak. This is Mr. Bo Cook. And if you guys would just share your plan with the board, which we think's a great one, really nice looking building, and then if I can answer any questions or just let me know.
All right, well, thank you, I'm Eric Bo Cook. Resident child will be going to South Brunswick High School eventually. We have a plan for a hitting facility. It's an indoor facility. I don't know if you guys have seen the plans?
No, sir.
As well? Have not? We have a set here. And what we've proposed with Coach is to put a hitting facility here along the first base side of the school. It'll also incorporate a new dugout, in turn, moving the baseball team from the third base side to the first base side.
That's a big structure.
So it's not facing the sun, too?
So it is not facing the sun anymore as well. The building is a forty, forty-two by eighty-four. This is the layout of the building. It would be a pole-type structure. What we would do is drive it in the ground like a piling, just like they would a piling house on the beach. So it would be the windbreak area for the area. We would have doors, that would be overhead doors, just for airflow to go through the building. And then, as you can see here, we would have three cages separated out. That would give us a full 60 feet six inch, so it would allow hitting and pitching. And then we can also split the cages where need be, where softball can use it as well. So it's a multi-sport facility. And then you'll have a common area that'll be back here where players can do other things and, you know, where it'd have a future storage area as well for any equipment Coach may have.
To the dugout?
Right, and it would enter inside of the dugout. So players could come in here, you know, they could get warmed up, come back, and then they're in their dugout. And then also, you know, you'd have a man door access there on the end. And then the other pages, or just some other framing details in the preliminary plan. Just showing, you know, the eight by eights that would be used. And also the actual elevations on what we would have. We've proposed a brick facade here at the bottom, rounding it out. You know, a shingle roof with an actual sided exterior, not a metal exterior, but actual siding. On that would be on the dugout and the actual hitting facility as well. This here would be the back, it would be facing south toward the middle school. This area right here would be the backside that would be facing the road toward the tennis court where it currently sits. And then this side would be the actual side that's facing toward the football field, that's where it would lay. And that would be the dugout, you know, as you're looking at it on the field.
We knew looks were important coming from down Cougar Drive, you know, how it would look over there, so we wanted something that looked really nice. And this just, you know, gives opportunity for us to compete both baseball and softball at a level. We're the only school in the county and within our conference that does not have an indoor hitting facility.
What is your roof structure consists like?
It will be an engineered roof truss system that will be designed by an engineer, and then it will be a plywood over frame with a shingle roof.
Well, I'm wondering about the interior volume of the building. Are you gonna have a flat ceiling?
Yeah, it'll be a flat ceiling. It'll actually be an open ceiling because there will be a cage on top of it, so the balls won't, you know, go up into the light system that's there.
Are you gonna replace both dugouts? Are you gonna have one dugout that remains the way it is? So you'll have?
Correct.
The home, well?
Which, both of them, I think maybe your question might be, you know, difference right now, they're two different dugouts anyway. The one on our home side right now currently is bigger than what's on the visitor's side. As a matter of fact, when some teams come in?
I mean, just in terms of appearance?
Right.
Will you extend the backstop?
Say again?
Are you gonna extend the backstop over behind the dugout to protect the building from flat foul balls? Or you're just gonna?
No, I think the way that it's set up currently, I don't foresee a problem of balls coming over to that area where it's setting. I don't think you'll have, you'll have it coming in the air, I don't think you're gonna have line drives coming at it.
There is, you know, we could put up netting where our backstop is at now, of course, then you have the dugout where it's at now. You could, there's a pole there, then a light pole, you could actually, if they done this at north, run netting right there so balls would not have a chance of going that angle. Most of the times, he's right, they do not take that angle, they usually end up over in the parking lot if they're taking that route.
Yeah, I can remember seeing balls fly over dugouts, you know. Is it, are you placing it there because you don't have any place else to put it? Because it is a kind of unusual place, isn't it?
I mean, partially, but, I mean, it's-
It's hard to find a good place to put it. We got the fieldhouse is going down on the end of, that one end, the open end of the football field.
And then you've got wetlands down there.
Yeah, and then there's, yeah, there's wetlands. I had said to the Coach and Coach Rainer, we don't want a pole shed right there, guys. But that is, that is a nice looking building and they need a new dugout on the visitor's side anyway, which will now become the home side, get them out of the sun, and give them a home field advantage, and so-
Put north in the sun. Put your team over there, John.
Yeah, I understand all that. It's, you know, we've agreed that it is, as long as we can meet the stormwater requirements and everything's permitted properly, it's, seems like, seems like a good thing to, you know, for the baseball guys.
How long will, we talked about support, how long will it take to get permitting?
I don't, I mean, you know, as long as you got a good, good set of plans, if they meet with, and we would meet with permitting before pre-submit or find out what they want. I don't think it's gonna take a whole lot of time.
How long will the construction take?
What we're looking at right now is probably about four to six months, you know, once permits are actually completed.
That was my question, what the projection time would be.
Who are you working with for the design work?
The preliminary is, was done by myself through my residential construction company. We have an architect that will, you know, smooth up the plans and put up all the final touches on it.
Well, I would suggest one of the most important things that he needs to do right away, or she needs to do right away, is to do an appendix B code summary, because my recollection is that even though it's a batting facility, it's still considered an educational facility. It'll have to have fire alarms and any number of other things, so exhaust those possibilities right away. Believe it or not, it's not just the barn, if it's on the school campus, it's an education facility.
So, before, ladies and gentlemen, continue to put work into this, I wanted to pass the board to review and be sure that the board was good with them and us working together, continuing to bring this building about.
How was West Brunswick and North Brunswick's facility funded? How were they paid for?
North Brunswick, I can tell you, I cannot tell you on West Brunswick. North, this was back when, golly, 2004, '82. We had, the pitcher's father was a contractor, Clint Ong, I believe his name was. And he drew up the plan, brought him down to the, to the boards to get them approved. He in turn worked with his subcontractors to provide some of the labor. They raised some money. The county, not the school board, but the county had given each school $25,000 the previous year, and North held theirs, the $25,000 until they got ready to do the hitting itself. And so Clint, under his business, built them, and his subcontractors, and with the help of the parents and the team, they built the building. And they ended up having a lot of donations from the community, not just labor, but parks. I know the electrical people provided all of the wiring at just minimal cost. And then, at the end, they had to raise just very little money because of the way the community pitched in to help.
I was on the board that year, and it was, I think, 2003.
Somewhere in that area.
But I recall that Hayes Howell had to end up coming in and doing the design work, and they created a pre-engineered metal building. And so Clint, what started out as an entirely voluntary effort, ended up having some glitches, but then it was mostly built by local people.
Local people.
Yeah, so, you know, like you were saying, but it did involve an architect, and that's where my recollection about the education facility, because I was struck, because that building is way away from the main building, but it had to have fire alarms in it and had to go through that whole DPI review process as well. So regardless of what we might think, it still has to be reviewed and permitted by several groups. The town of Leland, I mean, excuse me, Boylan Spring Lakes will do this. Yeah. And probably DPI. You, you mentioned that you had set aside $15,000 for design. Are you gonna toss that into kitty, or can we use that money elsewhere?
Well, I would, I'd like to put it towards this project. It's, it needs doing, and these guys have, it's like they got a, a good momentum going here, and I would like to help if we could.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty much what the board did before with-
Yeah, but I'd also, John, I'd like to see just how much they're gonna be able to raise, but if we can identify some more funds to help out the project, it seems like South Brunswick's always been behind the other two on athletics. And, don't go there.
I thought he was talking about wins and losses.
He was talking to you.
I'm ready to make a motion to fund it completely, but I don't think they're at that point yet, but-
Well, and actually, what I wanted to sort of figure out is what you need today. I think that this is what one would call conceptual drawings. They're pretty detailed in some way, but I also know that there's gonna be a lot of engineering that has to go into it, because it's gonna be a tall structure that's gonna take a lot of wind, it's not gonna have any support other than cantilevered piling. And it'll be interesting to see how that works, but it's gonna have some pretty rigorous review involved with it. So I'd say if you're, if it'd be adequate for the board to just indicate that they'd like to see it continue to develop, but without any kind of approval, because at this point it's very conceptual.
Well, I think you need to approve the $15,000 to go towards the final design, right? Sure need to do that.
It's in the budget.
Okay. She's already-
Yeah.
Yeah.
I say you get the final design and come back and-
Well, there doesn't seem to be any objections with the board of moving forward then, so-
Not at all.
It's a nice looking building, and I mean, I know everything has to be engineered and permitted, we, we know it's gotta happen, so, but we appreciate the board's approval. Moving forward, something that the school needs for sure.
We're looking for some better hitters over there, too, so.
You got something coming.
Glad to hear that.
My group's never lost either one of them, so hopefully, hopefully this will help them out.
So, do you want any kind of formal board action?
I mean, if the board would just conceptually approve where the building's going and, and the way it looks, and then we'll move forward with design, that would be, that'd be great.
I'll make that motion. So move.
We have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Cook, second, and all in favor, please. All opposed? Aren't any? So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Governor.
Thank you. Do you all need these?
We have the small one. Next item is public address, and before-
Mr. Cheers.
Pardon? Oh, that's right. We have an addition, Mr. Cheers. Another presentation.
Deborah, have they come forward? Oh, yeah, where's? You want to click anyone? What we have is the presentation with our data we were asked to present. As we start to look at it, we've had our data, we've started looking at it, and there's a lot of positive things, and there's also some things we look at that goes back to drive our plans and our improvement plans. What we're gonna do is just kind of go through and look at where we were this past year in relationship to the state. Thanks. When we look at the data, you hear the terms performance and growth, and I'll just quickly go over those. When we look at performance, that's all the students that are taking the assessment in grades three through eight with your reading, your math, your science, and then grade 10, and then your high school EOC courses, Math 1, Biology, and English 2. Also included, you'll have the ACT. The ACT is given to all 11th graders in North Carolina. ACT Work Keys, that's a test that's given to CTE concentrators that are seniors. All kids that have taken four CTE courses with a capstone are considered a concentrator, and that test is administered to those kids. Math Course Rigor, that looks at kids that are taking and passing a higher level math course, and then graduation rate. So those are included when you look at high school accountability. As we go through the slides, you'll see that we have, North Carolina will be in blue, and Brunswick County will be in green. You'll have squares, and they will represent the CCR, that's your college and career ready, the kids that are scoring levels fours and fives. A diamond will represent GLP, which is your grade level proficiency, that's your students that are scoring three fours and fives. So as we start out, when you look at trend data, I like to look at the shapes of the lines, because this is not a cohort group of students. These are students that were in third grade in these different years, so we're not measuring the same kids over time. Excuse me. So look at how the line compares. So the top two lines are the kids that are the GLP, the grade level proficient, kids scoring three fours and fives. Blue line's the state, the green line's Brunswick County. The bottom lines with the squares are our kids that are scoring fours and fives, the ones that are on track to be college and career ready. So we're just kind of, we're looking at the trends with this information. Again, with fourth grade, not the same kids. Fifth grade, this is a nice slide because it shows a closing of the gap over time with our higher level, our fours and fives, and with our three fours and fives in reading. This is fifth grade reading. Sixth grade reading, again, you can see the fours and fives have narrowed the gap with the state. Seventh grade reading has taken a downturn in the past year, a slight downturn with the state with the fours and fives, the three fours and fives had a slight increase. Reading in eighth grade, we can see a closing of the gap in the GLPs with our three fours and fives. The reading cohort looks at the same kids, or basically the same kids over time. So we went back to look at the kids when they were in fifth grade, and then compared the kids at sixth grade, at seventh grade, and eighth grade. It's not an absolute cohort, because some kids go in and out during that time. So we didn't drop kids out of the data set that had maybe gone out of school or moved in, so it's basically the same kids, not 100%. But you can, you notice that the shapes are very similar to the state. That, that's interesting, because what's happening in Brunswick County with reading appears to mirror what's going on across the state in reading. And reading composite, this just looks at our three through eight rolled up together. How are we looking at kids in third through eighth grade in reading? Math, third grade math, you can see that the trend has been above the state in both Fourth grade math. Sixth grade. Positive upturn in sixth grade math in both areas, the GLP and the CCR. Dip in seven. Dip in eight. And what happened, if you noticed, the 2005, that was a new version of a test, so you noticed the scores looked different than the years following that. That's often, you'll see that when a new addition or a new series of a test comes out. You can see it's very consistent with what happened at the state as well. The composite, again, this looks at all the three through eight rolled up together. Science, science has historically been very strong for Brunswick County. You can see we have been right at the state level, and now in both areas, we have surpassed the state, have a very active Science Olympia program in the state, elementary, we have a host of regional Science Olympia tournament, have a lot of involvement for the kids, that shows with the science results. Eighth grade, again, strong program in science in grade eight as well. Biology, you can see the EOC test for biology that were well above the state in both areas. It's interesting to note, our fours and fives are higher than the state's three fours and fives in biology. That's really important. English 2, this is a really nice slide as well, because we were slightly below the state last year, and we surpassed the state in both areas in English 2 for the 17th school year. Math 1, almost identical to the state, having increases, showing increases in proficiency over time, and that's reflected in the high schools' results as well, when you see their growth results, how well they had done. One thing we want to keep in mind, and we've had the discussion about Math 1 and eighth grade EOG math, this, for this current school year, 18, our students in grade eight that are taking Math 1 will only take the Math 1 test. So we'll have fewer kids taking the Math 8 EOG, and all of those kids that were taking the Math EOG, that were Math 1 students, were 100% proficient. So statewide, we may see an impact, or we will see an impact of that on grade eight scores. Excellent job, though, with the, with the EOCs. ACT, this represents the percentage of students that are meeting the North Carolina requirement, the UNC system for admissions of a 17 on the ACT. This is an area that we're focusing. Work Keys, this was the test I mentioned earlier with the CTE concentrators, closing the gap. We made an increase from 16 to 17, so we're getting closer to the state average in our work keys, scores as well. Graduation rate, very interesting statistic here, if you notice, our four-year and five-year graduation rate's exactly the same thing, it's 83.8. It's not the same denominator, that's why you can have the same, it's not going to always go up as a fifth year, because it's looking at a different set of kids. It's the kids that were in five years ago, it's not just looking at an increase over the four-year rate. And then this shows your- And then this shows your, if we met growth or did not meet growth in the first column, the Performance Composite, that's the percentage of students that are scoring fours and fives in your first, or your second column there, third actually. And then your GLP would be your three fours and fives, the percent of targets that were met, your annual measurable objective targets, and then your overall school performance grade. Some things that, to really highlight on this, that that's exceptional is the results of the high schools, all the high schools exceeding. That's a very nice data point for us. Also, if you look at Union, Early College, West Brunswick, and South Brunswick have exceeded for the past three years. That's a nice trend on growth. Growth measures what the kid has shown while they've been in school that year. So that's a very good measure. So we take all this and what happens next, our next steps. We're using the data to develop the instructional plan, the input from the school principals, superintendent, his cabinet, and school leaders from central office, we've been working on the instructional plan. We'll get the input from the school principals with that focus, reviewing the placement of the instructional coaches, looking at expanding SREB, middle school math, and then with the teacher academy, the focus on the teacher academy and with the lesson planning and developing that, and continuing with that project as well were some of the next steps. We're taking our data and seeing where we need to go to continue elevating Brunswick County. Any questions?
Those graphs are all aggregates of all of the schools.
That's correct. That's LEA data.
Right. And if you did individual schools and compared those to the state averages, it should match up pretty much with the, I guess, information about exceeding growth or met growth or not meeting growth. It'd be interesting to see that. And I'd like to see, it's helpful to look at a four-year picture, but it also, it's kind of interesting. I'd like to see maybe if we can pull that data as far back as you can. Is the limit on the data available to you 14, or can you go back?
We can go back as far as we have that. And the problem is, once you get a series change in a test, the data's really, you can't compare it because the...
Well, and I was just thinking, you mentioned 2015, the basis for evaluation, the testing change. Seems like at that inflection point, you ought to note that on your chart somehow rather than just remembering or having to remember it. Because that would be helpful in looking at it. And you could even add a footnote that describes that, in theory, was a ratcheting up of expectations.
As long as you're looking at the trends to go back, you know, you should, as long as you're comparing the two lines, it really wouldn't matter as much for the up and down. But we can go back, we actually go out, as the schools ask us, Amanda and I will go out and present to the schools, and we take that same presentation and add the school data to it so that they can see their cell, their school in relation to the state and the county as well.
Well, I guess what I was getting at is that clearly the next steps, in my mind, should identify those schools that are bringing the averages down and place resources there.
That's exactly.
That's what the instructional plan and looking at instructional coaches and placing of them. And SREB is because all of our middle school maths have been very low. We're looking at middle school math, and then we're looking at a couple theater schools that are middle school to see if that would help.
So with the school improvement plans, they're, do you win? They have to be in the state by October 30th or something like that?
Well, is this different from the school improvement plan?
Well, my question, my question relates to, if a school has, is deemed low performing, let's say, in math, how does that address their school improvement plan with coaches or whatever? How, are they going to be expected to make those changes on their school improvement plan?
Yes, sir. I think so, and we would ask them to. And that's part of what we were saying is having the school principals the input from there so that we could look at what resources we do have and the resources we could give to.
I guess my question really is, when we've received those school improvement plans, those areas that they're doing so poorly in, I would hope that I see some real effort by the school in that plan to address it.
Well, last year, was there not a state requirement for the schools that were not met? They had a, they had to report to the state and had to, so there was that in place as well. I don't know if that would apply this year or not, but...
For the schools low performing.
But it tied into their school improvement plans.
Really curious, it seems, I know it's different cohorts and all that, but kids are struggling in elementary, middle school, and then catching up in high school. That's hard, that's a head scratcher for me.
Part of that is there's fewer courses that are tested also at the high school level.
So, yeah, it's not...
Yeah, the elementary and middle's having to test every single child. The high schools are not. So the concentration certainly could be easier to accomplish at the high school level. So we probably should, we should probably expect that, correct? Because the concentration can be placed in a smaller area.
And it's not a growth continuum from third grade through high school. The third through eight is a growth model that stops at eight, and then it's a separate model for the EOCs.
Yeah, the measuring points, but it still fundamentally measures success.
Yes.
And that's, that's, I think, what I was looking at. It looks like we're succeeding in instruction in the high schools, but not doing as well as we should in general, although we still have schools of excellence.
Well, there's a couple of things. In fact, number one is, you know, there was a time where all, all the major courses were EOCs and counted in the formula, and that's been dropped, a lot of dealing with finances. And, and of course, our ninth graders who are over at PCA are in a different track, and they are the kids who need the most help, but they're not counted in this formula. That could be a negative impact that helps the high schools with their results.
Well, this slide about next step, such a broad statement. Are we to expect some sort of follow-up, more detailed analysis?
Yes.
A stronger plan that we can share with the public? Because I think if I'm sitting in the audience today, I'd like to know a lot more about how we're going to fix some of these issues and try to get the growth where it needs to be. Every school should be making growth in Brunswick County.
I agree. I think we all agree with that.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Teers. And I was trying to rush to the public address. Mr. Green, would you please review our procedure for public address?
Yes, sir. Looking at Policy 2310, it's public with the rest of the board. Presentations, presenters will be limited to five minutes per person. The discussions, if there are any regarding individuals or litigation, student records or other matters, may not be inquired into or need to be kept confidential. The chairman reserves the right to rule a speaker out of order in the event that speaker strays into those areas. So first speaker, Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Gilbert?
Like I said, we enjoy the, and we like your shirt.
Some of us do.
That's absolutely true. Let me introduce myself. My name is Neil Gilbert, and I am the president of the Brunswick Environmental Action Team, probably better known throughout Brunswick County as BEAT. I am a resident of Sunset Beach, and I've been living here in Brunswick County since the year 2010. My wife and I moved down here from every bus school teachers in New Jersey. So public education is very dear and near to our hearts. And before I go any further, I want to thank Mr. Lemon for participating in our SOGAG golf outing the other day. I have to say, I think our team beat yours. But I'm so glad you were there, so thank you for your participation. In addition to, in addition to being a member of BEAT, I was a marine biology and environmental science teacher for 30 years. I am a volunteer at West Brunswick High School, that's why I have the shirt, primarily as the senior project, graduation project. I've been doing that. Barb is doing it for several years, and I've been doing it ever since. I find the staff administration here in West Brunswick High School exceedingly accommodating and welcoming. I've been impressed by what I see by the people that work in our schools. But that's what I wanted to here to talk about. I really, being a teacher, I compare the students to the school where I taught, and I look into Brunswick Beacon, I follow sports, and my guy, he looks just exactly like my high school, Noddy High School outside of Trenton, New Jersey. But I'm here to talk about water. On June 15th, the Brunswick Environmental Action Team reissued a public statement urging the state and federal legislation to ban the release of Gen X into public waters. You're probably asking yourself, who is this BEAT? Who are these members? We've only been a committee or a group since April. We've already had 260 different members throughout Southport, Leland, Calhoun, Bashi, Bolivia Supply. We have members from the entire county. Now, who are the people that issued this statement? They're just not your run-of-the-mill, average people getting involved. We have Dr. Richard Hilderman, who was the science chairperson at Clemson University, lives in Sunset Beach. We have Dr. Nina Maribel, chemistry teacher at University of Georgia, lives in Brunswick County. Dr. Sybil Burgess Murray, professor right here at Brunswick Community College. A name you're probably familiar with, Dr. Dwight Willis, who was an educator here in Brunswick County Schools. Jan Harris, who was North Carolina Coastal Federation's Environmentalist of the Year two times. So we're just not a bunch of hacks getting involved. We are a bunch of people who really know our science. I taught marine biology for 30 years. I am learning so much from these people. I just happen to be the spokesperson. Oh, sorry. Since our June 15th statement, there has been numerous meetings and forums in both Brunswick and New Hanover Counties. In these meetings, there have been, there's been no new science to dissuade us from our statement of June 15th. There's nothing new. Matter of fact, anything that has been coming out of these forums is telling us that it's not an exit we're just necessarily worried about. There's other compounds in there that could be more hazardous to our health. And as a result, the biggest thing that my concern is on June, July 19th, at Brunswick Community College, there was a Gen X forum. And at the forum, there's a panel of eight experts on water. Amanda Fitzpatrick, anchor of WWAY, asked the panel, who here is drinking the water? And out of those eight people, the scientists, UNCW, North Carolina State, none of them raised their hand. They're not drinking the water. That raises a lot of concerns to me. All right? So as time goes on, even as recently as this past Saturday in Leland, Dr. Kelhun from UNCW gave a workshop up there, and he's highly against drinking the water. So my concern isn't necessarily, you guys, the school boards, you have a lot of important things to do. You really, I give you credit, I've been working for school boards for 30 years and up in New Jersey, and your issues aren't always the easiest things to do, but something like drinking water shouldn't even be an issue. Unfortunately, it's been politicized, not by you. But you have a decision to make now about the drinking water for the students here in Brunswick County. And this is something that, cut a minute.
That's it. That's the time.
Can I finish my statement?
Yeah, please.
Okay, thank you very much. I get with it. You have an important decision to make. BEAT would like to remind the school board that you do not have to depend on the state to provide clean water options for our students. You can take the lead by showing strength, character, and conviction, by taking a stronger stance outside of Raleigh's guidelines. By doing this, you're going to gain the support of all of Brunswick County residents. We will be on your side. You know you have a difficult decision to make. But BEAT is offering our services and our advice to the Brunswick County Board of Education so that you can do what is best for our students and employees of Brunswick County Schools. It is the position of BEAT that when it comes to safe drinking water, the parents of Brunswick County, their children, and all who work in the schools deserve safe and healthy water. Thank you for giving me this time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Ms. Donovan? You're on the clock.
Well, hold on, let me get started and let me get situated and then put me on the clock.
He had the Trojan T-shirt, that's what.
You know, you realize he got an extra minute.
All right, my name is Emily Donovan, and I am a parent with two children at Belleville Elementary School. I'm also the president of the Parent Advisory Council at Belleville, as well as a founding member of Clean Cake Feeder. And I am here to tell you that the water that you are cooking with and the water that you are offering children to drink with is toxic. There is no health goal for C3 ester. There are no health goals for the NAFI and byproducts. There are no margin of exposure guidelines. There are no toxicity mixture data. These chemicals are per- and polyfluorinated alkaline substances that are also known as PFASs, PFOSs. And PFOSs as a class are linked to serious health problems. Numerous animal studies show cancer, benign tumors, kidney disease, liver problems, thyroid dysfunction, and reproductive issues. Exposure to PFOSs have been linked to disruption of the endocrine, which can lead to diabetes, obesity, and thyroid disease. The North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has set a health advisory level of 140 parts per trillion for Gen X. That's the concentration where no adverse effects can be expected in the most vulnerable of the population, which includes infants, children, pregnant women, and nursing mothers. However, the health goal does not address people who have been consuming large quantities of Gen X for the past 37 years, which is all of us. Also, these PFOSs bioaccumulate. That means that when we drink them, they do not leave our bodies immediately. They stay and collect in our blood and tissues for months and sometimes years. Brunswick County Public Utilities detected between 695 to 910 parts per trillion of Gen X in our finished tap water as recently as June 19th. If you grew up drinking local tap water, then your margin of exposure, which is your chronic level of exposure from consuming Gen X every day for the last 37 years, could be greater than this 140 parts per trillion health goal. Also, the Gen X health goal does not address all the other PFOSs in our water. Some have been found at 50 to 100 times greater than Gen X, and just recently, we found NAFI and byproducts. NAFI and byproducts, scientists are saying, are possibly more toxic than C8. And the EPA has issued a lifetime health advisory for C8 at 70 parts per trillion. However, we found through EPA data recently, which was released on August 31st, that NAFI and byproduct 2 was recorded at over 7,820 parts per trillion at the end of July in our finished tap water. That's not okay. I reached out to H2Go earlier this summer and challenged them to offer clean water options to their service area, similar to what CFPUA was doing in Wilmington. We are drinking the same toxic cocktail that New Hanover County is drinking. H2Go came back with a proposal to offer reverse osmosis filling stations within all the public schools that they service. That would include Belleville, Lincoln, Leland Middle, and New Brunswick, North Brunswick High School. This is a 200... This is a $200,000 gift. It is a donation, and will dramatically improve the quality of water for over 3,000 students in your district. I am also working with the Brunswick County Association of Educators to research ways to implement programs across the county, similar to what New Hanover County has done for their school systems. We are asking for choice as parents. No parent should have to worry about the water their children are drinking at school. No student should have to worry if the water they are drinking at school will give them cancer. And just last week, my son forgot his water bottle. I had to run back home, grab it, and give it to him. Another parent told me that her son is lactose intolerant, and when he was at, when he asked a cafeteria worker what he could drink instead, she handed him a cup and told him to go get some water. He knows what's in the water. My daughter comes home regularly, and her water bottle is empty. Did she run out at lunch before recess? Did she go thirsty the rest of the school day? These are questions that no parent or student should have to consider. We should all focus on quality of learning with the least amount of disruption to the instructional day, and you can help us with that today. You can do the morally right thing. You can afford to provide all of our children, the 12,500 students that you service, a better quality of water at home, a better quality of water. I can afford to provide my children a better quality of water at home, but what about the families who can't afford to do the same thing? I can afford to send bottled water to school, but what about those families that can't see? I'm a youth director at a local church here, and it is because of my faith that I've decided to use my voice to ask for clean water for families who cannot ask for that, to take care of the least of these, because that is where I feel I am called to serve. I'm almost finished. In fact, I think I am finished. So, we did it right at the same time. So, let me say something. Because it was drop-off, I had to get a sitter, but other parents could not be here, so we have a petition that we sent around to parents and concerned citizens, so I would like to leave that with you. This is the study that scientists have found on Naphia and by, this is not Naphia and byproduct, but this is similar, and this is what's making them very, very concerned and worried about Naphia and byproduct II. This is information that Clean Cake Fear has created. We worked with Dr. Jamie Dewitt from ECU. She is a leading toxicologist that studies these types of chemicals. We also worked with Dr. Knappé, and he is the lead researcher who actually found and detected these chemicals in our water supply, doing a study that he's done over the past couple of years. So, I will leave you with this information, and if you have any questions, you know how to reach me. I know I sent you all an email, and you received it. I think I sent you an email. I also sent Mr. Stanley an email. I didn't receive a confirmation, though, so I don't know what happened there, but...
I think the firewall caught mine on yours. I think the firewall got yours on mine.
Really? Okay, I didn't get a bounce back or anything.
Sometimes it won't.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. Well, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy Baldwin.
Tammy is actually watching my kids. She couldn't be here, but I know that we had one other person on your printed agenda that's not showing up on there.
Tom Dibson.
That would be me. Guess I'm batting third, which is an improvement over my baseball days.
I've got a hilly.
Anyway, you're probably wondering, who is this guy, and why should you listen to me? So, I want to start my remarks by what my professional background is. I worked at the Department of Public Instruction from 1985 to 95 in various capacities, including a senior budget analyst, where my job was to do fiscal research for the governor, the general assembly, state board of education, state superintendent, and others. The thing you may remember, those of you who are old enough to remember this far back, I was the lead analyst. When Governor Martin redid the teacher's salary schedule back in the early 90s, which unfortunately doesn't resemble anything like what we did. In 1995, I moved to Michigan, where I served as assistant superintendent in a couple of school districts, where my scope of responsibility included water quality. I also served on the board of the Michigan School Business Officials, which is the supervisory body for the chief financial office of the school personnel. Needless to say, I've been to more than a few school board meetings in preparing for this. I went, I got my calculator out, because I'm a finance guy, that's what we do, and I calculated over my career how many school board meetings I went to. It was over 400.
Bless you.
And, so, I know where you all come from, and as it includes the state board meetings I went to. But I want to thank you for what you do. I can't tell you how many people over the years I've seen get on school boards over one or two issues, and they get on the board and they find out, boy, this is a lot more complicated than I thought. And so, I want to thank you for what you all do. Over the years, it's been my experience that most school boards prefer to avoid political issues, but unfortunately, as mentioned earlier, it seems like everything has been politicized these days. In this case, I think the neutral position for the board to take would be to at least inform parents that there are some reasonable scientific concerns about the quality of the water here in Brunswick County. In the end, I think the best thing to do is what's best for kids, and that should drive your decision-making in this regard. I got one last comment to make. You may think I'm a little overly sensitive on this issue, but the last school district I worked in was less than 100 miles from Flint, Michigan, which, as you all know, has some really serious water quality issues, and I can only imagine what the long-term consequences are going to be for the people that live there, including the school district, with what could probably be an increase in special education expenses. While the circumstances are different between Flint and here, I think, I'd like to point out that failure to act is a possible common issue. People in Flint waited too long to act, and I'd like to ask you to not let this happen here. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, you have your meeting agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
In, Mr. Chairman, in my past conversations with Ms. Cahill, our finance director, she indicated that there would be savings if we could implement a carpool here at Central Office. So, I would like to add that to our agenda, please, discussion of carpool.
Under action, possible action items? Any other additions or deletions to the agenda? With the addition to that one item to the action, possible action items, I'm going to get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Ms. Cook approves, makes the motion to approve the agenda. We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, seconds. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So moved. Also, ladies and gentlemen of the board, you have a minute, your minutes from August 1st, the regular meeting, August 8th, budget work session, August 15th, committee meetings, and August 15th, the operations committee, curriculum committee, and operations committee. Any corrections needed to those minutes? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
Lemon.
So moved.
Mr. Miller makes a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Ms. Cook, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next item is consent items. We've, I believe, discussed all these items previously. Any comments needed there? If not, we can, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent items.
Mr. Thompson makes a motion to approve. We have a second?
I second.
Let's move on seconds. All in favor, say aye. That item is approved. Action items. First item is the SRIB contract addendum.
Hi. Mr. Chairman, as we were looking at the information that Mr. Cheers presented today, and we're talking with the principals at Shalove Middle School, we want to use the same type of pilot that we used with Cedar Grove last year and extend it to Shalove. We already have it, agreed upon to pay for it at Leland Middle School, and so, this is an additional $13,000, but we put it above close to $60,000, I believe. So, I'm asking that you approve that we spend that $13,000, and we have the money to expand the program into Shalove Middle School, is that correct?
Any comments? I'm overreacting from voting on this item. Have a motion to approve SRIB addendum, contract addendum?
So moved.
Mr. Miller makes a motion to approve. We have a second?
I second.
Ms. Miller, in seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The alternative school local option, who has that?
Each year, for alternative schools, their accountability is a little different than the traditional schools. They have what's called local options. There's four choices that they have. They can participate in the traditional accountability model that the other schools participate. That one, I think, I don't know if I've ever seen that one used by any schools in the state. There's another option where the scores from the alternative school would go back to their home school, and then the alternative school would not have any accountability results. Those scores would just, wherever that kid would be from the district, they would go back to that school. Option C is where they can participate in what's known as an alternative school's progress model, and then option D is where you would write your own accountability model. We've historically used option C. That's the best fit. I met with Mr. Horn, and we reviewed this again this year with him taking over the helm there at BCA. That's the one that uses 60% of growth, but you also get 20% for achievement and 20% for persistence. So, you're actually, if you keep the kids in school at an alternative school, they're getting credit for that. So, I would ask that you guys, the board, would approve option C for our alternative school local option.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that why on the scores, they were called maintaining versus growth, any other kind of growth?
Yes, ma'am. They can have progressing, maintaining, or declining would be the three options for an alternative school. That's exactly why.
Let me ask you a question about the alternative school setup. The ninth graders who are there, you think that model's working as far as their achievement levels or obtaining what they need?
I think it provides an opportunity for the students that have had some challenges to maybe ease into high school, and Mr. Horn's with us. What I've seen this year has really been amazing at the alternative school. I've been by there almost every day since school started, and rarely find Mr. Horn. I don't think I've ever found him in the office. He's out and about, and that ninth-grade hallway, it's engagement going on, so I definitely think it's an advantage for the kids that are currently there, to help get them focused before they enter the larger, you know, 1,400 or 1,200 student high school.
Well, I know you weren't involved in setting that school up, but all I've read is that when you put a group of students who don't have other types of students to bounce things around with in the classroom and all that kind of stuff, that's not a model in which we get the ultimate out of it, so that's the reason I was asking.
Well, a good example, you know, we have a clean energy program there, and one of the sections, the alternative schools, almost, it's divided almost into two schools. You've got the ninth-grade academy in a section of the school, and then you've got students that may be there for some type of alternative program or alternative learning in a different section of the school. And clean energy, we have one section of clean energy for students that attend BCA, and you can walk into that class of the kids in the clean energy class, who are upper-level kids at BCA. I think most of them are sophomores there, and they're engaged, and they're taking part, and they're doing their math and their higher-level computations, so a lot of it, I think, can go to expectations as well for the students.
Yeah, I don't want that to be a breeding ground for a dropout. You know, all those kids dropping out, they need to...
We use the same accountability model for the ninth-grade program as we do the alternative?
The alternative school is, they're all students, a 30A, so they're all students of that school, you know. That's part of their accountability. Now, if a kid takes Math 1 in ninth grade, Math 1 is caused on your accountability when you're in grade 10. English 2 is when you're in grade 10. Biology would be when you're, as far as individual accountability, you know, obviously, you take the course, some take it at ninth or 10th. You have to take it by 10th grade, though. Other questions, alternative school? If you would approve option C today, we would really appreciate that.
We have a motion to approve the alternative school local option C, as requested by Mr. Cheers.
So moved.
Ms. Cook makes a motion that we approve. We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. The county parent advisory council list, who is, I know we've presented that as, Ms. Jill, I had a couple of questions on the list. It looked to me like one school had too many people on their list based on policy, and I saw one name on there twice. Is that, that's not supposed to happen, correct?
Was that Mr. Shaw?
Huh?
Mr. Shaw, was that one you saw there?
Is it, was it Mr. Shaw? Yeah. So, Mr. Shaw is on there twice and can only serve in one school.
Where's he been serving?
He served one hit last year.
At Supply?
I believe in Supply.
Does he still have a student there, or?
I don't know.
Or have they gone to, I don't know where?
It's probably that the two principals didn't realize they were nominating the same person on two different committees, so...
Unless he moved to the middle school with a child, I don't know.
I don't know. Do you know, do you know that's?
I can speak with him.
And I believe one school had one too many.
West had one too many.
West Brunswick. Well, that's okay if it's West Brunswick.
I said nothing. I can't even agree with that one, Mr. Miller.
We can get this, okay, we can get a motion to approve the list with those two possible Make me a motion for this, please.
Make a motion to approve the parent advisory council members for 2017, 2018.
Thank you, sir.
With the exception...
With the exception of those two. We have a second?
I second.
Let's move on. Seconds, all in favor, say aye. So moved. Dramatic design for Town Creek School.
Can you make any better?
Hmm?
Can you make any better? So, you're gonna make an introduction?
I do. We, we've been working on elementary school and the middle school design at Town Creek. We've had participation from parents and school administration there, which we appreciate. KSQ has done some nice work. We've asked them to do some extra things at both the middle school and the elementary school that we hope our budget will be able to afford, but we're not sure about that. So, today, we'd like to get the board's approval... So today, we'd like to get the board's approval of what you're gonna see here is kind of, I call it pre schematic design. And once you see that, you'll like it, and then we'll move forward into the next part of the process. And I'll introduce Doug Byrne, who's a principal with the firm, and just take us through the presentation.
Before you leave and go to Doug, I would like to at least acknowledge the parents and...
You're taking the wind out of my sails.
Team, I'm sorry.
You're taking the wind out of my sails.
Well, I'd like to acknowledge their...
I'm gonna ask them to stand up. Anybody?
They actually cared enough about the process to show up today.
Please, you wanna stretch, you're sitting there. Jerry, get up. John, you stand up. Sue, with Craig.
I was there.
As usual, because it's still my thunder. First of all, I want to thank...
Well, you keep it in your shirt pocket.
What's that? It never ends. For the opportunity to work with you guys, it's really been a lot of fun. I just want to say it's been...
Don't you and Jordan also...
Oh, yeah. Well, first of all, I've got with me, a consultant in one weekend, who is a security consultant, is someone who's been in operations with school districts for many years. And I asked Linda, just, he lends some good comment. And we have Jerry with Jam Jordan, and we're probably gonna talk a little bit about money today, a little bit of payroll. But I do want to thank everybody. It's been approximately, I think, six weeks since we started this. And the folks that were here came to four sessions. They gave us a lot of time from five thirty to sometimes seven thirty at night. And it was just, and it was one day, we actually, I think, came in for about four hours the day after one meeting. So there's a lot of time in it. What we're gonna do...
Meeting ended at seven o'clock.
Was it?
I said the seven o'clock meeting never ended at seven o'clock.
Well, that's because of the input, the dialogue. What I want to do today is really summarize what we've done. The first piece of this will be the elementary school, we're gonna take what we did and how we did it. The second piece will be really the participatory planning, programming, design process that we did with the group, and that's for the middle school. We thought the elementary school would be relatively easy, but did I do that right? Basically, what we did was we came up with two ideas. One was a continuation of the existing wing of the elementary school to add the sixth classroom addition. That square footage for that particular addition is supposed to be around seventy-five hundred, eight thousand square feet in that range. We looked at that design, and based on some other things I'm gonna show you in a second, because they're a little bit out of order, there were some things that came out of the participatory process that talked about collaborative learning environments, thing where they can do team teaching and project-based teaching and things like that that I'll show you in a second. But for this particular scheme, we looked at the idea of turning it at right angles, and the intent there was that it would allow for more expansion on that particular wing, should the time ever occur. We then took it, and that's what, I'm gonna take you through a series of slides, and it's gonna be very quick because I've only got a few minutes to do this. Basically, it was an extension of the school to make it look like it was part of the original wing of the school, so we carried the same materials, the same windows, et cetera, et cetera. So that would give you an idea of the very simple sixth classroom addition. Couple of renderings on what that possibly could look like, which even is relatively simple. And then we turned around, we looked at turning it at right angles, and this is where we began to have what we call Scope Creek, where the project got a little bit larger. When we looked at it, what came out of the visioning session, we'll show you in a second, was the idea of a commons area where they could do some other things besides just regular classroom teaching, as well as create an outdoor area, which would be an outdoor classroom and an area where they can be science taught and some other types of programs. This particular scheme ended up, I believe, around eleven thousand square feet, if I'm not mistaken, ten thousand eight hundred square feet, which is bigger than it really needed to be. So we decided we had to go back and look at some other options. But first, we wanted to show you some different ideas that the groups looked at in terms of what that particular scheme might look like. And then we looked at some ideas of changing the roof of the element to the addition itself, what else could be done with that, some different ideas. And then we decided, we started getting involved a little more with, and I think Craig orchestrated this, where we got involved with Jam Jordan, starting to look at the costing of this, in an order of magnitude. And we don't have detailed drawings, I have to really qualify that. And we started looking at what this might run. And it was ironic that we did this, I think it was last Friday, and we're doing another project for another district that's an EC school for exceptional children, that the numbers came in, and they were approximately two hundred and thirty-three dollars a square foot. The district had budgeted two hundred in between two, ten and two hundred and fifteen dollars a foot, and the previous project, the same contractor, had submitted was a hundred and sixty-nine dollars a square foot. So the question was asked, what happened? And the answer was that there is an amazing labor shortage, that material costs are going up, and we've had some pretty rough weather around this country that has caused a lot of people to go to other parts of the country to be laborers rebuilding communities. And subcontractors can't find people. When we proposed this with Jerry's group, it was literally the same answer that was received, that this building was still way too big, it was way over budget, and how could we resolve that? So we put our thinking cap, we reduced it down to six classrooms, we reduced the collaborative area to make it as small as we possibly could, and it still came in a bit over budget. And so the intent was that we decided, and anybody that ever goes to architectural school, and John knows this, the first design that you come up with is usually the one you end up going with. That's exactly what happened here. The intent of this scheme, and we're gonna ask for you to allow us to proceed it to schematic design today, is to actually move that sixth classroom wing so it actually touches the original school. And then internally, we'll create a stairwell, we'll create more central bathrooms, and we'll make it out of construction type, which is steel gauge construction, that we believe will come much closer to making that budget. The intent would be to have an alternate for an outdoor classroom, which is what I, the group, really agreed to last night. And that's pretty much the summary for the elementary. You all have been very vocal, have I got it right? So are there any questions on that? And I can go back through this, but the next one's more important. The middle school. We did this process many years ago with the Brunswick Learning Academy here, which was quite a while ago.
Doug, do you want us to act on that?
Yes, if you don't mind. If I do it right now, you won't really edit this.
We do that.
I think we'd be ready to.
Can we approve the elementary one?
Right.
We'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Well, I'll make a motion to proceed with schematic design and appropriate phases for the scheme, what they'd call it, the initial concept, it looks like. As they suggested, they were gonna have to do some additional work with budget purposes, but anyway.
We have a second?
Second.
Ms. Cook, seconds. All in favor, say aye. Okay, that's schematics approved. Does that include a new playground or any kind of thing?
At this moment, we're just talking building. That's the hard part. The budget is gonna be the challenge. I think, and I will say one thing to the credit of Jordan, is that the important thing is that you have a seem, a reasonable, smart idea onboard now, in which you're gonna be able to help use some of these numbers for the other projects that you've got. So you're gonna have an order of magnitudes of benchmarks to work with, so that was a pretty good idea, pretty good idea. All right. The participatory process is very much a user input stakeholder kind of process that we go through. Takes approximately four meetings to do this. And we started out by looking at some of the concerns, as well as some of the opportunities that could happen with the school. We took those, we listed all those out, and we took those, and we created what we call ought to be statements. An ought to be statement is something like, there was a concern that when you walked in the school, you did not look directly into the dining area. So the dining room ought to be located where there's a control mechanism such as the administration area, which protects it from the direct outside. Obviously, some parent is looking for their child, they're not supposed to be there, and that could be an issue. So we created the ought to be statements, we ranked them. We went through a series of visioning exercises and gaming exercises, which we'll show you in a minute. The first visioning exercise, which is the lower picture on the right, was primarily putting images up in words and asking people about excitement, what we'd talk about, the tradition. There are a series of words we used that helped us describe what folks were looking for. We then moved into something called the gaming session. And what we did was, we took the building program and cut out pieces that represented the exact spaces that were in the school. There were four teams, I believe at one point there were twenty-six people, but I think there were really about twenty-two that came to all the sessions, or close to it. And what they did was, each team designed and came up with their own idea. It was interesting that each scheme that we came up with was different. So we took various schemes. This one focused on courtyard. This one was more of a, I believe this one actually had a series of three independent buildings. There was another one that was more of a courtyard scheme, but actually had a...
It was a maze?
It was a maze. But it was the concept, what's important, I'm gonna show you what was common to all of them. This is a scheme in which the second story is in the upper left-hand corner that we go over, which is what's gonna have to happen to the school in order to make it fit on the site, in order to make it more efficient, is it's a two-story educational wing. What came out of this, of all of them, was the concentration of the public kinds of spaces that would be involving the dining area and the gymnasium, because that's one of the criteria this school would be used by the community. The other pieces is the focus of where the arts would be, which is music and art, where the dining facility would be, and then administration. We then took those and we broke them into the general components, and we called this one the courtyard scheme, which became very prevalent throughout the entire process. Folks were really interested in indoor/outdoor environments and teaching. Again, you can see the relationships between the different components of the school. By the way, the same symbols I think we used for the bond referendum from that extension. This one was the L concept, which was also a scheme where we had an organizing element or a quarter, which is the central arrow you see, and everything was organized off of that particular, of that particular focus of the entire school. We have to define the entrance ways, the bus entrance, the student entrance, which would be through the bus, and the other piece would be the parent entrance. It's very obvious that the students coming off the bus need to pass by or through the dining area, because some of the students eat there. That was one of the elements we looked at. We then went through a second visioning exercise. We had a lot of images, and we asked everybody to take a green dot for things they liked and a red dot for things they didn't like, and I'm gonna do these quickly. Basically, looking at how you would look at an information commons or a media center, how that might, what shape that might take. We certainly wouldn't propose a gym like this, but the idea was the natural light and the use of natural light. The idea of a maker space, which could be used for robotics, it could be used for print making, for a print machine and doing things like that, Lego competitions and things like this, a flexible sort of industrial-looking space. The idea of music could be more closed, we're apart, we want to try to get north light in and so forth for students doing the art piece. I only show you this, not to scare you, but this is actually gymnasium, which the whole thing, we can't afford that, but the idea was, they were interested in being able to have the ability to have performance of some type. So we're not sure how that all goes out. We looked at outdoor classrooms and what that means and how they relate to the building. And you can see, basically, we're showing you where the green dot elements were. Again, with the dining facility and how that would work, to do something maybe slightly different, doesn't have to be quite like this, but it's more of a bistro kind of thing, where you, the kids might get a hamburger, they might get salad, but there may be a different kind of choice. We don't know what that is yet, but it seemed to be they wanted something a little more of a straight cafeteria. This is a classroom that simply shows natural light, and you have a lot of woods around a lot of portion of these schools, which opens up a lot of opportunity where there won't be that many distractions, but you would have the ability to bring the environment into the building. We thought this was kind of funny, actually, but it really was great. It shows they don't want lockers. What it did was, it's how do you use a hallway as a collaborative learning piece where you could have plug-and-play, those benches could have in the ends of them, plug-and-play for computers, recharging, and, you know, that's how kids communicate and learn today. We went through a lot of exercises with Craig, he did a great job on this, and we basically boiled it down to now it's an eighty-nine, basically, let's call it a ninety thousand square foot school. All the colors you see here were reflected in the previous slide, and you'll see them a little bit as we go forward. But it is ninety thousand feet, that's the gross square footage, and we believe that the things we're gonna show you in a second are still in that range. I mean, we're in eighty-nine and ninety-two thousand, that range. We started out looking from what we learned from the stakeholder group, we started to put them into some formats with an organizing element, the use of courtyards. I'm gonna do these quickly, because it's too much to comprehend. And we just looked at how they might work, how the classroom wings might work. We're talking about exceptional children, and we're talking about sixth grade on one level of the academic wing, and on a second level would be the seventh and eighth graders, somehow linked together, whatever that may be. We talked about maybe a science kind of rotunda space. The idea of flanking that on those four blue boxes around it could be the maker spaces. Some of these may end up being budget items, we have to deal with, and more than likely will be. But it gives you an idea of concentrating the dining, the entrance way is through the administration area, and this is just one idea, taking the art and music up against the gym. Gyms are noisy, music rooms are noisy, the art room could also be used as a green room if you had some kind of performance inside of the gym itself, so the gymnatoria, basically. And we just looked at different ways of developing these different schemes. This one got a lot of boos, I think, actually. And it's obviously, you know, with all the curves and everything, didn't really work. We looked at the site. Now, I'm showing you this because what came out of one of the presentations really was moving the school not on the fifty-eighth, the large track, but moving it closer to the elementary school. The hatched marks, I believe, I'm gonna say this right, Craig, we thought they were wetlands, but they're not. And I'm gonna show you. The next slide shows you where the wetlands are. So basically, it's a little hard to look at this, but towards the right of the screen where the elementary school is, excuse me? Do we have a pointer going? There you go. Right there is probably the most buildable area that we've got, and the intent would be to try to avoid anything to do with the wetlands. We're trying to miss that because of the cost of working with that. But we first started out working with, this was the original concept. How do we take these plans and look at the different configurations, drop-off, pickup, and so forth on the proposed property? And then we looked at how could we expand some of the different education wings. One of the criteria was have the teachers' workroom within, like the sixth grade contained, seventh grade contained. Each one would have the workroom in there rather than a central one, because they do everything by blocks, which was something I didn't realize that they did here, but that's what they do. So we have all that in there. So I just showed you one and two levels. All right. So as a result of everything we heard, we started to, we had them critiqued, went back and we kind of relooked at some, and I'm gonna show how they sit. And we moved it to the elementary school, and what became really loud and clear was the idea of a K-eight campus. That came out pretty loud and clear, it was to make it a K-eight campus. Plus, we could use the bus turnaround, the bus if possible. We'd have to create parent, but the idea is how much of the existing dry school we use. The things we don't know are utilities, stormwater, the details, we don't have those answers yet. We're getting the surveys authorized, I found it, as we speak. So we looked at that.
Just to clarify, on the K-eight campus, you'd have, individual schools would still maintain their identity, and it would, you know, still be an elementary school and still a middle school, but to the extent that's possible, sharing, co-locating facilities and, I guess, public identity as a continuum between one school and the other.
So so far, we've, you know, we've taken all of the ideas, and then what we did then was we began to look more detail, and we came up with four ideas, and this is basically scheme one. The comments that came out negative, this was last night, on this one was the, it's too close to the elementary school, how do you expand it? You'll see two dotted boxes in there. One of the criteria was, we need to find a place on the campus for the day program. It's not in VON, it's not in the actual program. It's, right now, I think it's five, I don't have the exact, fifteen, five thousand.
The Bolivia Day Treatment.
Well, remember, who believes?
It's a middle school day treatment.
So the intent would be to try to find space on the site for it, if there's something happens and we could have the money somewhere, then, we gotta figure out how to make it work, and how does it work with drop-off? We found it last night. These kids, I stand corrected, come on the bus, which we didn't realize that, because the EC school we're doing this other city, they come by parent or they come by a van, they're not, they come from group homes and things like that, it's a different set of circumstances. So that was one scheme. And so then we took that scheme and we rotated it. And we basically, what this scheme does, again, begins to create a front door for the middle school. The other thing is, in both of these... The other thing is, in both of these, there's an organizing element down the middle. We've done exactly what the stakeholders, and which we think were pretty good, was utilizing the relationship of the gym, art, and, and, and sort of the gym to the commons area, which is, which again is that white area, and the dining to the commons area, and the media to the commons area. What that means is, we may not have to build walls to separate some of these spaces. You may walk down and look in the media center, and part of that space is actually part of the commons, which is very prevalent in schools today.
One of the other things I was gonna point out with this particular scheme is, as you turn the, the administration areas and some of the other components of the school, you have a better vision to areas that are currently not seen by the administrative staff of the elementary school. So it begins to get, if you will, a better security picture overall for the school campus.
In this case, we were able to just sort of, we have to clarify, let's feed off of the, we only have one way in and one way out, which is gonna be a challenge for the school. So basically, that was scheme number two. Scheme number three, we took the same thing, we bent it, just to see if there would be some advantage to doing that. I don't think there was an advantage, from what I gathered. And then scheme four, we bent it the other way, and there were some folks that liked the idea that we sort of squeezed up a little bit on the commons area, and this allowed the courtyards to take on a slightly different shape. This particular scheme, and I'm gonna go back one, but if you look at the gymnasium and the three boxes, that's the, the girls' and boys' shower and locker room, and the, the third block, the larger, was actually the mechanical equipment. You see, in this scheme, you have that long box and there's a bad edge to it. What this scheme starts to do is you get rid of the edges. We're trying to make them more... Every time you turn a corner, it costs money. Every time you turn a corner, it costs money. So one of the ideas is, how do we start smoothing through all of that? And that's the refinement that we have. So what came out of last night was two, was the idea of taking this scheme and begin to neaten it up like this scheme. So that would be the task and what we're looking for. I guess the ladies and gentlemen who are involved, if they have any comments?
We'd like to, only because, I mean, we are growing. And if you go back to two, you'll see that we'll have room off of each wing if the need arises to expand. Where with the other ones, you don't have that capability.
And just to clarify, the school has been designed for four hundred and seventy-five students, day one, and a six hundred and fifty student core. And the student core, what that means is, you've sized it for the administration, the gymnasium, the media center, and the cafeteria dining are sized to serve six hundred and fifty students. It's important to know that, so that you can grow by whatever that may be, the hundred and seventy-five kids, yeah. So you'd be covered.
Gymnatorium or gym? What?
The gymnatorium, what we mean by that is, at the end of the gym, you would put a stage. And therefore, you could have for the community, so the gym went from ten thousand square feet to fifteen thousand square feet to accommodate that.
Yeah. Is that what we're considering doing or not?
We added, our music teacher was part of the process, of course, she's still at school, but that was one of the things that she brought up. Was being able to have that capability, kind of like they do with many events, that they have, can put on these big productions.
Right, I agree. I like that.
That was one of the...
We're so short of event centers in our county.
With parents and everybody at the very first meeting that we had.
Well, and Cedar Grove's band room was outgrown before it even got started practically.
These should be sized for six hundred and fifty students.
We need a mini Evans event center, they don't.
That's what we talked about, like eventually, being able to put something like that between the two. In the future, next bond, right Sue?
That was a discussion.
That was what came in. That extra five thousand, it was not in the original program. So that's what we'll be working through next. We know that's important. We've been asked to, to, to at least reserve space for a day treatment program, should, you know, should that occur at some point in the future. So the original budget was based on eighty thousand square feet, just conventional classrooms. That was done in 2015. So we've got some work to do to, to look at, you know, how, how, if, if we're able to, and how we're gonna get these, these extra funds in.
Just a couple of quick comments. Pay attention to what he was saying. When the school is fully built out, the capacity for the middle school will only be six fifty. I think historically, we've shot for seven fifty for middle schools. But keep in mind that we've had to add on to Leland Middle numerous times in the past five years. And we're currently at eight hundred and thirty or something like that. But they haven't really filled out yet. They're, they're still, people are still showing up. But we're experiencing growth that is pretty extraordinary in the north end, and there doesn't seem to be a taping or off. And the question was asked, and I discovered or found out last night, that we are getting an update on the demographics for the north end, I guess for the county as a whole. But it does raise the question, you know, about...
Whether that's enough.
Whether it's enough, the six fifty.
Probably got I-140 something, just up the road.
I mean, it's what, where we are, but on the other hand, you don't get to build schools every day. So I want us to sort of pray about it, or think about it, ruminate over it, however you wanna put it.
Well, John, I think that, just looking at this... One of the things that can happen... Yeah, okay. One thing, well, they, our test, if you went to eight fifty, to add on a two-story addition of classrooms right there, or there is fairly easy. If we had, if you're gonna end up with that many students, would you end up having an auxiliary gym? If you do, we need to plan for where that might go.
Well, and that, that's the point, because you, you talked about the core being sized or planned for six fifty, like the cafeteria, the bathrooms, those kinds of things.
But John, see, on the scheme, you actually have the ability to add to the cafeteria. One of the, there are more improvemental to this, which is a negative.
It's really hard to make bathrooms bigger, though.
That's the, well, you'd have to add more, more toilets. If you added more wings, when you added to the wing, you'd be adding toilets. That's expensive space.
We may be at a point that we can't do much about it, but I, I think it's worthwhile for us to think about. Because, you know, should we sort of try to work as, maintain a loose fit, as, maintain as large a facility as we can until we know that we, we have to back down some because of budgeting? Because it looks like the construction market is not being very friendly towards our planning right now.
So on a high note, it was a great experience. It really was. I, I think the group really did a great job, and, and, you know, the words that came out about using collaborative spaces and using things that are exciting to kids and creating environments, I mean, that they're gonna be excited to, to come to school every day, I think is really, really important. And this school begins to do that. Is this the first, is this, when was the last time you guys built a new school, a full school?
Not long ago.
Yeah, so this is the...
They were model schools.
And, I mean, we also wanna, you know, based on, for the bond, this is gonna be a successful project. But number one, the number one ought to be, was on budget, and the number two ought to be, was on time.
Because all of the young women have third graders. They're gonna be the first group.
And I will say, after, after working with these folks, this has been a tremendous experience. I'm an architect and a planner, done a lot of projects, Doug and I, together. The amazing thing is how folks who came in, and I, I don't know what your architectural experience has been like, but it's been phenomenal to watch these folks get engaged. And to the point where they're starting to say, well, you know, let's talk about that. You know, what we're gonna do here is we turn the corner, and they did get, they, they were completely involved, and it tremendously helped us as we, we continue forward.
On that, just to close, is that most people don't know how to read a floor plan. And this is the premise, I, I wrote about this a long time ago, I could be somebody's grandfather. But I mean, back in nineteen seventy-four, it published this. The whole concept is that now they understand clearly those who didn't, a scale and proportion of big things are. Because they had pieces that they had to move them around, and they had to deal with them for four hours. And then they keep seeing the same stuff that we're throwing out. So they're actually, it's incredible how smart they are with regard to looking at these plans. And that's the biggest, most important piece, because then they really give you really good comments.
Did y'all pull out the Legos at any time?
We had an EC teacher there, and we had, you know, representatives from the grade levels. And our fifth grade typically is split. I would say majority's south, but it's not far off. So that's gonna really take a load from Leland to be able to go there, and also from south. But we've got structured behavior support, so our only choice with those kiddos right now, when they leave us, is BCA or, or Cedar Grove. And that's a long haul. Structure of behavior was in place in town. Yes, and it's a regional classroom.
Have you talked about roadways yet? Are we at that point?
We, we have started to talk with NC DOD about roadways.
Well, we talked as a group, too.
Who's always designing ASQ.
That way.
Met with NC DOD, so we're working on that. I don't have anything to report yet.
Okay, but, I mean, that's the original, when we purchased this land, I think I was the only one on this board when we purchased it. And we had a right-of-way out to Governor's Road, and then we were gonna try to get a traffic light at the intersection there. But that's a lot of traffic that he does from right out on seventeen. And, you know, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a lot. I mean, we've got to put it out on Governor's Road.
Do you think that's something that we should maybe commission a traffic analysis on? Because I, it's too late to open the school, and all of a sudden realize that it's functionally...
It's gotta be a part of this construction.
Well, because you're gonna have our... You'll have different start times, but still, that may, that may be to your advantage or may be a disadvantage. I don't know.
We have, Bobby Taylor's met with Ittrick to do a study about bus traffic and the amount of traffic, and so I don't, I don't know what the scope of that is yet. I know he's talked with him.
Well, we have...
That might be part of it. I'll check.
A number of, a number of municipalities, including Southport and others, just won't do any major development without a traffic analysis. This is a case where we only have one way in and out. And we ought to try to imagine what a typical day looks like before it actually occurs.
And that rounded out supposed to be a development, so you have that in there.
Yeah, you gotta develop, and God forbid something happened between seventeen and the school. And blocked everybody, and we can't get to them, or...
If there's an accident out there, yeah. Well, anyway, let's, let's, as a part of this, or maybe as a separate item, we should suggest to Ms. Rutledge that we make some sort of effort to do an analysis of what we can expect traffic-wise before it's too late to affect the outcome. Does that make sense to you? Otherwise, I, I'd like to see more, so I, I'd like to make a motion that we ask the architects to proceed with development of scheme two concurrent with, they're wrestling with the budget. And show us what we can get for our dollars.
Timely motion. I have a second? Miss Millican's all in favor?
Do we have room for a high school then?
We will have.
Well, you said she moved the school over that far. That's what I said to her. I said, you've got all that land now. You've got all that land.
Central high school.
One stop does it all.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Are you backed up? On the contract?
Musco lighting. This is for softball lights at West Brunswick. Well-passed or serviced life, the poles, they've had it, we gotta do something. It's, it was our planned expense in the capital outlay budget. And this is being, contract was, went through the National Joint Purchasing of Lights, NJPA, which we are members of. And so I'm just asking the board for approval to proceed with the work.
Could we recycle the old poles and send them to Southport?
I, I hope we don't have to do that. They're not nice enough for that building.
We probably don't even have Musco lights.
That's right.
Y'all have to light up the car lights to get it to play.
Let's make a motion to move forward on this.
As Sue will tell you, too, Musco lighting is the preferred lighting for outdoor sports. It meets all of the safety regulations. It's the one that the North Carolina High School Athletic Association backs, and not just our association, but other ones.
Well, I don't understand entirely how it's all done, but apparently, it's bid, their unit prices and all are bid on a national level. So we actually have quite a bit of purchasing leverage in this, and are getting a pretty good financial deal out of it.
Yeah, we do. It's just like things that we buy off a state contract. This is a national contract, and so another one that I think we're members of is US Communities is another one of them, but you get good pricing on those things.
And I was kidding about the poles, of course, but it does raise the issue that you're trying to address lighting at all of our facilities as quickly as you can.
So I don't remember which schools are in the bond after July, when the bond money becomes available, but at least one. I just don't remember which one it is.
I think all the high schools will be affected come July.
And, and that includes through the performance contracting? Do we have any lighting for the exterior under the performance contract?
Not sports lighting. But exterior building lighting, yes.
Well, we can save money there, you know, for sure.
Somebody make a motion to, on this, to move forward on it?
I'd make a motion to approve the contract with Musco for West Brunswick High School field lighting.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Cook. Ms. Cook's seconds. All in favor, say aye. So moved. Ms., Ms., Ms. Milligan?
Yes, I had asked to have an addition to the agenda, and that is regarding a motor pool. As I stated earlier, I had spoken with Ms. Cahill previously, and she indicated that we could have a savings of approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars if we rearranged some of the uses of the vehicles and established a motor pool. So with that in mind, I would like to begin that process at this time. Of course, we will have to phase it in, but the first phase, I believe, would be to look at or present a motion that would park the cabinet cars and any out-of-county cars that are not stipulated by written contract at this time. And with that savings in the beginning, I would like to see that utilized for classroom instruction supplies.
You have a second?
I don't really, I, I don't have any, I mean, I don't have anything, I'd rather have something that I could see what it's gonna do. I mean, I don't have anything in writing in front of me, so I'd really rather, you know, have some more information about what we're cutting, what we're talking about.
Well, basically, the first phase, of course, we would have to...
Are you asking for a proposal?
No, we would have to continue to study it, and I would say, we begin with this first phase at Central Office and out-of-county, cabinet and out-of-county. And then in the year of two thousand seventeen and eighteen, we look at other areas of vehicle use.
So what would your motion be?
My motion would be that all cabinet and out-of-county cars be parked at Central Office in a motor pool, the formation of a motor pool, so that those cars can be checked out or used as needed. Any, and the savings, again, I would like to stipulate that that goes... Any, and the savings, again, I would like to stipulate that that go to instructional supply for our classrooms. And I would say November 1st as a, as a projected date for this to begin.
I'll second that motion for the purpose of discussion, further discussion. Anybody else have a comment?
I'm like Ms. Cook, I'd like to see it sketched out and, for example, the idea of phasing it in, well, when, when will we actually see any benefit? And it probably is going to turn out that the benefit comes later when we phase everything else in, so I'm not sure. I'd like to sort of see it sketched out and in paper form.
And I guess my only concern would be allocating the funds that are saved. I really, I feel, I'm hesitant to allocate them to a specific place because I don't know, there might be a need that arises that could be used somewhere else, so I'd hate to allocate it, you know, to say it's only going to be used for this where it might be a need somewhere else. I mean, I don't know specifically if there are other places that it was needed. I'm just, I'm just not.
Classroom instructional supplies is a huge area.
Oh, I'm, I know.
It could be in any subject area at any given time.
Right.
You know, so, and the first phase, well, it would be immediate savings.
How many vehicles in the first phase?
Six, seven? More than that? Seven, so I said six to seven, but Mr. Turby's saying possibly eight.
So the motion is to make a motor pool out of the Central Office vehicles?
Yes.
And that savings goes to instructional supplies?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, discussion announcements, Mr. Superintendent.
What would you like me to talk about then?
Whatever's under that.
Community meetings on the 19th. We haven't decided yet as to which, by schedule, when we're talking about finance, policy, operations and curriculum, it would be on the 19th.
That would be today.
Yes, today.
Which is us, right?
Which is right now. Here we are. Here we are.
And we got to all of it as part of this.
Okay. So we covered.
We've got it covered.
Right.
And the county parent advisory council meeting, the first one's on the 26th at Schloet Middle School at 6:30, Mr. Lemon being host. And we will work up a agenda for that meeting. Primarily, that meeting is used to elect officers and then possibly discuss some topics that PAC would like to have us discuss or identify topics that PAC would like to us discuss in the future. Next regular board meeting's on the 3rd, which is just around the corner, two weeks left.
At South Brunkland.
At South Brunkland High School. This is the one where we are doing the celebration with our employees, teachers of the year.
And that begins 30 minutes early, or what? Anybody remember?
It does so that people can.
For reception or?
There's a reception just prior to.
Reception, okay. Six o'clock. That's it?
That's it, yeah. Yes.
On October the 3rd, I don't know what time the board meeting starts, but if you, you guys would entertain them coming an hour early and getting back together with KSQ and looking at some of the.
I thought you were going to say you will bring out your.
That's pretty quick.
Salty Sue.
They'll be ready by then.
Sure.
They'll be ready by then.
They will.
Just a quick question, you know, are we, are we going to discuss the other issue or what are we going to do with that?
That was the request. Okay, closed session, we have a motion enter closed session.
We want to, she's sooner than if we could do the third meeting an hour earlier. Be at five.
At five.
Be at five and then while we're doing that, then we could be having the.
Reception?
Reception.
Okay. Not a lot.
Need to write that down too, I guess. The 3rd at 5 o'clock.
Is that it? All right, motion to go to closed session?
That stays on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to go into closed session, second on this, Cook. All in favor, say aye. We have about a five-minute break.